I'll open the October 27th, we have a planning board meeting at seven o'clock. The first order of business, our chairman has got a prior engagement tonight, and we're missing two members. Chuck, anyway. Can't appoint anybody to replace Sherry, because he's the selectman representative. And Craig is not here, so I'll appoint both Jack and Ray to... Jack can replace Craig, and Ray can replace Chuck.
I've got big shoes to fill.
So we've got a continued site plan review for Fieldstone All-Purpose Storage, Fieldstone Land Consultants.
Well?
Yeah.
So Nathan Chamberlain with Fieldstone Land Consultants. As you know, we've been working, we were waiting on the Fire Marshal's office's comments. We got those.
Oh, did you?
We still...
Do you have a copy of that?
It was in an email.
I don't know if I got it.
It's still a little vague, and we're still, you know, we still want to sit down with the fire chief to finalize things.
Okay.
Basically, but I just wanted to update the board on where we stood in terms of the plan, and get any input they might have. So, you know, this has been going on quite some time.
It has.
And we initially came here, and this site plan was approved, and there was a building on there that was never built, and it was determined that we were invested to build that building, and so on and so forth. But the applicant, you know, that would have been a climate-controlled building with interior, you know, hallways and stuff. And so they'd like to revise the plan, and just go to standard, non-heated storage buildings instead, access from the outside.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's less, it's less building area than was on the approved plan. We're keeping everything within the existing gravel footprint here, for the most part. So there's no, no increase in impervious area or anything like that. And, you know, keep maintaining, keeping the Fire Marshal's comments in mind, too, maintaining separation from this existing building. So this is just like to get the board's input, and we'll continue to, you know, review this with the applicant and the Fire Chief.
That should be a lot easier from the Fire Chief's perspective.
Yeah, yeah. Like I said, it's less building, but as far as, you know, addressing the Fire Marshal's comments, they were a little vague. You know, they actually had me two rounds, and one of them was all building-related. He didn't really answer any of your questions.
Okay.
As far as if it has, you know, if it's using for vehicle storage, and, you know, access around the site, and stuff like that. And then another guy wrote an email, and he had comments that addressed that stuff in the, in his email. But that, you know, he did speak to Chief Richards, and he does want to see a cistern for fire suppression, so...
I mean, the cistern size specifically for that site, so it's...
Right. So we haven't finalized that, and so we want to meet with him and see if we can't finalize that, and also, you know, the access. Because, so they, you know, they said that any driveway 150 feet long needs to have a turnaround while we're on 200. So would there be any given that?
Well, yeah, you've got room to make a turnaround probably between the two existing buildings, right?
Uh, in here?
Yeah.
So they can loop around this.
Okay.
I thought we were talking about this. This dead end here.
How long is that?
That's like 200 feet. So this building's 180, so it's 180 to here. So if you get a turnaround in here, you'd have to shorten the building.
Okay. Yeah, talk to them about that. What are they...
I mean, 180, 150, I mean, I thought the rule of thumb used to be 200 feet, but this, this NFPA 18 that they're using is very strict.
Are they meeting Monday night? When do they meet?
I was just going to arrange a meeting with the Fire Chief.
Okay.
The Fire Ward's, I don't know, we didn't seem very productive. They just leaned on the Fire Chief anyway, so...
Okay.
So as far as this layout, if we can get...
Yeah, I mean, what's the board thinking? I don't see a problem with that layout. I mean, apparently...
Well, I mean, it's even less now, because there's not going to be a heated...
Right, less exposure.
...climate-controlled building, so there's less issue for...
Right.
Like we, like originally. So I think it's fine, except for, like you said, the, like you brought up, the, have the discussion with the Fire Chief, A, for the cistern size, and B, the...
Yeah, I know we did a cistern at the last self-storage building.
Yeah.
Golf course used to be in it, wasn't very big.
No. And turnaround, you know, what he requires, like you said, the NFPA standards.
Right.
They're strict, and it would kind of hold your feet to the fire as far as building it up, to cut the building size down, but maybe they'll waive...
Yeah, truly, you know, he can make a determination one way or the other.
Yeah, they can make a wave. I would defer to the Fire Chief on that, though.
Do you think you'll have, like in two weeks' time, you're going to meet with them, like this coming week, or...
Yeah, we have to, yeah, get in touch with them, set up a meeting. Yeah, we can shoot for two weeks.
Okay.
I apologize if it's taking so long, it's just...
No, it's not all your fault. I mean, it took forever for it to hear from the Fire Marshal's office.
Right. The chief retired on us.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what monkey wrenches.
Comedy of errors here.
So two weeks?
Yeah.
Where does that put us?
I'm looking.
November 10th?
Maybe the second week, second Thursday in November, right? November 10th, yeah.
Yeah, that's right, because holidays.
It's, uh, that'll work it out.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Moves we continue this until November 10th?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
See you in two weeks.
See you on the 10th, next night.
Yes. It's a concerted effort to have some more...
Sounds like the movie, Two Weeks.
It'll be ready in two weeks.
So next on the agenda, we've got a continued subdivision of Thomas Carrato by J.E. Blanger-Lance Raveen. Okay, we had a sidewalk out there. I don't know, it was fairly productive.
I think it was, yeah. All right, there were a couple items that were, that were brought up that, um, Craig gave you his list, he had several items that he talked about along the sidewalk.
Is it in the minutes from...
I'll go over memory, but you know, you let me know if it's threatening, I guess. Some of the reasons for three lots, we've already gone over that, with the rest of the world by the Central District. And a couple of the concerns, Aunt Neighbors had some concerns, and we'll start to the north, I guess. Barbara McCann's house. Barbara had a couple of concerns. One was the drainage that runs down the road as it is now. And the second was the location of the proposed driveway we had on there. So what we've done, we kind of made that decision to deal with everybody, because it shifts the driveway to the north, 25 feet, it takes off the lot corner.
Mm-hmm.
It puts a sweep in it, it gets us to, it doesn't exit opposite her house, hopefully keep the lights out of her yard. I think that worked out pretty well. And I've got, I told Craig we'd work on a bit of a grading plan, um, kind of bring that all together. Because it did put the driveway up a little bit, like a hill going up, entering in. I think we have a lot of full copies. They were supposed to, Anthony, our engineer, did the work, but he didn't give it to me on his, his plan set. But he represents what's on the ground, what we're working for. It's just that one. He doesn't show all the grading, kind of play with the whole thing. All right, well, I want you to...
Yeah. You got one for yourself?
I don't know.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. So we've got that one driveway that shifts to the north, comes out there to the house that called me, and we can catch the drainage from that driveway, kind of turn it a little bit into a culvert. And one of the neighbors brought up, Scott White, that there was a culvert that crossed the road there.
Right.
So we went up and we found that, we dug that up. It's about 30 inches down, buried. I think it's a 12-inch corrugated pipe, it's totally fall, well, falls, falls to the road.
Silk.
Everything trashed, bottles, cans.
They probably don't even know it's there.
Well, it's been quite a while. It showed up, it is showing on the subdivision plan that created the lots across the street. We never would have even looked at it if somebody didn't mention it. So that's on the subdivision plan, you can see where that is, it's, crosses just in front of our lot, between where it says Sugar and Hill.
Almost, almost in the corner across the street.
Yeah, yeah, that's called right crossing. So that's sort of an issue, that's, you know, the drainage issue that's going down that road, runs all the way down to Mr. Nichols' house, where he has some concerns about runoff. The whole thing is just, right now, sheeting down the edge of the road, continuing down through. So what we also did was the third lot, the one cell of the existing farm, again, on site, we talked about this, was shifting that driveway from the center of the 51-foot strip of land, normally, to avoid that stone wall, try not to disturb that.
Mm-hmm.
And again, on that grading plan, you can see we get the grades to work with that. And that ends up catching anything that's still going down the road, and you can force that out to the back. So the road itself is acting as a berm, the driveway's acting as a berm, to kind of keep any additional runoff.
So that driveway is, I mean, the first driveway we talked about is pretty much flat now, right?
Yeah.
And that one, slight downgrade to the house from Sugar Hill Road.
Correct.
So everything will tend to run down the driveway that's heading downhill.
That's what we intend to, yeah.
Yeah.
And to catch it off the road and force it out back. Again, part of all of that is the fact that that street culvert's buried.
Looks like you got, maybe it's in a four-foot cut or something like that?
Yeah.
Four or five foot cut?
Yeah, yeah. Another thing that got brought up was the issue with the well behind the house. We found a well. There was a pound, an artesian well out down, it was drilled, a pound or whatever. It's buried in the front yard, excuse me, the backside yard. We exposed that, located it. It's between the existing dug well out there and the bump out in the house. And we were 4K area to accommodate the new septic for the house, and actually, on that plan, the red, the red plan you have shows a little bit of that septic to go.
Yeah.
The pump system up inside. I know Mr. Nichols had some concerns with the runoff that's coming down the road, and he's kind of at the bottom of the hill. What we're doing is proposing to push everything towards the back, to catch that swale, I think that wetlands out back, and then getting down to Lindsay Lane. I think it's a second culvert on Lindsay Lane that we'd be feeding into, and I think we saw that on the sidewalk. I think that's everything.
Yeah, because, I mean, he's pushing it, he's got diagonal, like culvert by the turn of the driveway, so it's even pushing it across the driveway, so everything is being pushed out around the back of the house.
Yeah. Another thing, a slope in maintenance easement across from the property, because there aren't any ditches up there now, and there's not much room to work between the existing pavement and we've added that. I think it's on your, your plan set.
Yeah, on the first page. You guys see that drainage easement? You planning on building the driveways before you sell them, or what?
I think Mr. Carrato, I think, I think he considers himself retired out of Massachusetts, but wants to work up here in the hand. He has a small building company down in Mass somewhere.
The reason I ask you is because you get that cut on that...
Yeah, it overlaps a little bit.
It overlaps a little.
He's planning to build houses himself, so...
So if, I mean, if he gets it built before he sells the lot, then you probably won't need an easement, because once it's there, it'll stay there.
Yeah. Oh, there was another item, too, that Craig talked about, and I put the note on the lot, 178 Mountain, that's over the line.
Yep.
I think that's everything we talked about.
Let's note it on the first page, too.
Yeah. That dug well, is it going to be filled in, or what's it?
Um, we talked to Tom about that a little bit, and I told him it's not quite as simple as just filling in the well.
I know.
You gotta legitimately decommission it, so he's not what, show what he's going to do with it.
Still hooked up?
No. Everybody, he thought he was, he didn't realize there was a filled well there.
What you may want to do is either show another 75-foot well radius on that, too, state may make it easier. Well, they would, anyway, because of state subdivision. Or stick a note on there saying that's for irrigation only or something?
Yeah, yeah, non-portable water source.
Yeah. I've had to do that, too.
I have to get two balls.
You got a plan, you got up there?
Just wanted to add the first time. A bit of a warp to it, stand on its own.
You want to, you want to pass this around, see if the butters can see it or something?
Sure. We only have two, Barbara and Mr. Nichols. This is where we, okay, this Barbara's house is down here. We shifted that driveway, I think it's 25 feet off of the side, so that lights wouldn't cross her driveway. And then over here, so the other driveway would, that's obtained a stone wall, driveway to the north. This set of driveway ends up acting as a dam, almost, to cut anything, the foot coming down this way, and force it out back to that second. If you're down, I'll show on here, the, that second one.
The, to open that culvert up, I mean, that's going to solve probably half the issue coming, the water coming down Sugar Hill Road, because it's going to catch half of it.
Yeah. It's quite a chart, I mean, because we're still, we're probably mid-slope on that run.
Yeah, I mean, the driveway, you've got the other driveway going, it's going to catch the other half.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what we need to do to...
Wasn't that a concern of Scott's, that it was going into his property, flooding the backside of it?
Well, that's what I'm thinking, I'm not sure what we need to do to open that up.
I don't think he was saying it was a concern. He's the one that brought it to our attention. That, that culvert was there, and he said he had, there was a, said something bubbling out of the ground down below.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know where that was, further down.
Could be a spring, could be anything.
The inlet on our side, I was able to open that up and get down to it. On his side, I was starting to get in his land pretty good, and I wasn't really out for digging.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I know.
I just got the top of the pipe, and that's where we located it.
Probably notify Highway Department, they're there, daily work.
I'm not sure how they clean that out.
I think it's that old, it's a corrugated one, it's probably plugged, probably there with...
Probably no bottom left of it.
They'd probably replace it, put a plastic one on it, anyway. They probably don't even have a record to see it.
No, I'm sure they don't, if it was like it, we found it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Again, we wouldn't even have known what part of Scott had mentioned it.
Sometimes they don't keep records, but the old days, they didn't keep many records of it.
I mean, it's already there, it's been there, so I don't know that...
Here's, this is that subdivision down across the street that shows that culvert, actually there, that's Barbara's house, and that's Scott's house there, and that's the culvert. This is down in, who's, 84, I think it was?
83, yeah.
And it was there then, so...
Sure it's the same pipe.
Oh, yeah.
And we're getting a drainage and maintenance easement there, so that the town could go in and open that up, put some riprap or something in there.
Well, I mean, if it's within their right-of-way, they don't have to go one of the other person's land, they can cut it back.
Yeah, that's why we get this drainage, this line here.
Yeah.
He's up there, too, so they got...
But if they can keep it...
It's pretty tight. I mean, just where that culvert was, I was starting to dig a little diagonal to get into it, so it's, you know, edging towards paved road.
They may even have one already.
Yeah, it's fairly close to the road.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, it looks like the road's pretty close to the right-of-way right there, too, more than the other side. Okay, I'm going to open up the public comment. Anybody from the public have anything that you...
What are you, I'm Dave Nichol.
Yeah, come to the...
What are you doing about drainage coming down to me now?
Dave, Dave. Yeah, you got a, you want to turn that microphone to them a little bit?
Yes, what, what exactly are you doing about the drainage for everything coming down to me for the wetlands?
Hold on a second. Yeah, because you said who you are and where you are.
David Nichol, and I'm at 129 South Sugar Hill Road.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. So what exactly are you doing for drainage problem for all this coming down and getting to me? I didn't hear exactly what everything...
Yeah, that's fine. What we're doing is we're catching, there's a culvert, a cross culvert here, we talked about that on site, and that's, that's right here.
You're going to still shoot that over into Scott's yard?
Well, that's up to the town to kind of clean that out. That's already kind of causing a problem, there's no ditch lines across there, so nothing's, unless it humps over the same line of road, nothing's going across the road, it's all sheeting down this way. So our grading shows the town opening us up, but we've got the second driveway coming in through here. Still it, Barbara?
None of it doesn't show my property on it, so...
No, it doesn't, it's down here.
Yeah.
But this, this driveway here, where that tall stone wall was...
Yep.
Shifted that, shifted that over.
You shifted it up, yep.
That ends up creating a bit of a dam, and then forcing the water back down here into that second fire wetlands down back. Your lot again is over here. So we're pushing any runoff from ours down this way. And then that comes into that second Lindsay Lane culvert.
Right, and when that doesn't get draining, it's all coming down here, and whatever's going on through here comes down and goes into my yard also, increasing.
Well, that's quite a bit lower.
That's going to increase it.
Um, but it's quite a bit lower down in this corner than where your house is. I mean, it's, it's already...
I've lived there for 28 years, so I know when this all fills up, it's not draining across the road here, it's all coming down and filling up. That's why they increased the size of this drainage here, because it was just flooding out over the road.
Dave, Dave.
Lindsay Lane and that.
Yeah. We've kind of been over that on site previously, that's, I'm trying to focus on what, how the plan is addressing it?
What he's saying is still causing a problem, it's still going to get down to his property. We're saying, and I think Craig was kind of in agreement with it, is that it's catching it by, the grades here are forcing into that second one. This fire wetland is going into that second Lindsay Lane culvert. It's not coming down to the first one down here by Dave's property, by Mr. Nichols' property. Because there's a bit of a hump in the land coming across here.
It comes down through the land into mine, right, right, right. I have all, but, you know, it's, you can't prevent what, what's already been happening, right, it's still going to get any worse.
Right, right.
I think you've already brought that to my attention.
And I think, I think getting that culvert, the town cleaning out that culvert and opening that up, was going to siphon off some of the water that, that now you're seeing.
Right here.
Yeah.
Not just going to go further down into a gentleman Tyler that lives here, which crosses the road there, it's going to flood out his driveway even more, if you're going to start pumping more water into there.
That, that, it's a historical culvert, it's been there. The town gets it working, then it starts doing its job.
And I get what Mr. Nichols was saying, the, there is a second culvert, Lindsay Lane, down here, down by Lindsay Lane.
Yeah.
What he's saying is it crosses back to his side, then there's that culvert here, Lindsay, and the second one down here.
Mm-hmm. This one's not doing its job. Remember, we were seeing, it's just trickling. When we have the snow runoff and the rain, it really fills up.
The, okay, anybody else? You all set, Dave?
At the walk-around, I did ask for some type of an engineered drainage, drain plan, right, for the driveways, the foundations, the wells, the septic, how it's going to affect the groundwater, and me being at the bottom of it...
We'll get to that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any comments?
Hi, I'm Barbara McCann, McCann, for Vocal Trust. I just had a question, Jacques, for you, is when I look at the drainage plan...
The drainage, yeah.
Yeah, the drainage plan. The driveway cut is definitely moved, but then the driveway's going to curve up, and I'm just wondering where my house fits in there, because if they're coming down and it's straight across from my picture window, is there any screening, like some...
We haven't proposed any. You're, I think you're right, because they will sweep up here, 50 feet, 75 feet back from the house, we'll start sweeping back around. We really, it's quite a grading issue if we go straight back, cutting up over that knoll. The knoll was at the intersection, was to get the, shift the driveway over and then get the headlights out of the house that way, but thank you so much.
Yeah, this property is quite a bit higher than mine, I'm on the lower side of the road.
No, I mean, all the way along the stone wall was a bunch of scrub, right?
Yeah.
There's a couple larger trees, but they're not much. Yeah, there's some, how do we call them, Christmas tree trees, or forest on the left, left to right. I think that's, that's before you get the law on.
There's like one big dead, partially dead tree here, I think.
Yeah, probably go.
Well, I'm not exactly sure where my house is, but... I just wanted to make my concerns known.
Yep, thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, I'll close the public input. So I guess we get three things to consider here. One, something for blocking headlights coming from lot...
77.
One, 77, deck one. And then cleaning out the culvert in front of 77. And then maybe at the end of the culvert, that fifteen inch proposed polyethylene pipe. Maybe some kind of retention. Even if it's over by the wetlands, the edge of the buffer, so it's not right in front of the house. You've got a four foot wide grass swale there, but it'll slow it down, but doesn't retain much. Have you thought about what you could put there for any kind of retention structure?
No, I didn't, this is what I got yesterday afternoon. I kind of thought there'd be a little bit more to it.
Cause I think that would, I mean, between cleaning out the culvert and getting the water, that, that takes half the frontage, that culvert's about the middle of the lot, right, the middle of the existing lot.
Yep, yeah.
So that takes the water from half the frontage and puts it on the other side of the road. In the existing house, I mean, what's there is there, you're not increasing any runoff or flow off of that. So really, I think what affects Mr. Nichol's is all from this what, two. Everything else is gonna go the other way. And as luck would have it, today was the last day of our DPW director.
Well, they're still working.
No, he's done today.
No, I mean, but they're still working, so.
Yeah, but I don't know.
Somebody that's.
I don't know who, at this point, who we could talk to even about getting that cleaned out and.
And Naomi, come back on Monday. Which is all they'll do anyway, because they're working there.
Yeah.
Four day work weeks.
Can you talk to the guy about some kind of retention, detention for this, uh, structure there for the lot, too?
Sure.
Off the end of that, in line with that grass wheel before it hits the wetland there?
Okay.
Cause it looks like the way he's got us graded, the whole front yard is gonna flow that way too.
Yep. All right, I mean, I, I don't care if we come back again next month, I mean, whatever, next meeting if he wants to.
You think you'll do it for next meeting?
Can we be in two weeks or is it a month?
The tenth, yeah, we can do it the tenth, which is two weeks, it's either gonna be two or three weeks, cause the month is Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Yeah, two weeks if we could.
Okay, see, they're gonna be the tenth or the seventeenth.
Yep. Two weeks.
And, and think about some plantings too, blocking the headlights coming out of lot one.
Yeah, but where would you plant them? That's what I was just looking.
Well, on the stone wall here. Cause, I mean, really, cause you pull straight out of the house, you put a pin in there, it's pointing right, you know, pretty much towards our, you know, Barbara's house, so.
What if we put it back at the snow maintenance easement, so it's not, not in the way?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, you gotta keep your line aside or something when you pull out to the road.
All right. Sure.
Motion to continue to the tenth, second.
Motion made by Ray and seconded by Jack, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
All right, thank you. So it's just those two items?
Yeah.
What's the type of drainage retention on that one? Okay.
And we'll try to catch up with the DPW guy and see what, see what we can do there.
Yeah. Thank you.
So the next meeting for this is gonna be on what?
The tenth.
I'm on the table. I will be here. I'm gonna go on Amazon.
Oh, we're gonna, he's gonna do something about, he's gonna, the driveway is, he's gonna come up with some kind of retention, detention device to help retain water, so it doesn't sheet off of that, through that culvert and go right up to the wetlands and raise the water level that's already there. So. That and cleaning out the existing culvert should dramatically reduce the amount of water heading down there.
Good meeting, I'll tell you. Yeah, I'm sure I'll be at the, the next one, I guess.
I don't know. I don't know. But, um. Okay, next on the agenda is a subdivision, Pine Island Realty Land Consultants. Let me get you guys to sign in. Yeah, give me one second, I gotta look at the application.
I'll ask you for a signature.
Yep. Got a question for the surveyor.
Yep.
That cemetery. Is that parcel, is that owned by the same owners, is this lot or is it owned by somebody else?
Which one?
The cemetery.
It, it actually, don't know who owns it, it says it's reserved and accepted out of his deed, so he doesn't own it.
I know you've been to the ZBA prior, last, two years ago, somebody.
This was, well, the prior owner went through the process.
Yeah.
Something, I don't know about a ZBA.
No, they did.
Well, I don't, I don't believe that's the case. I think it stopped long before any of that took place.
The, um.
If the question is about ownership of the cemetery, it clearly sits right on the tax map that the town says that it's theirs.
Well, no, I don't think that's the case. I think.
Address the application first, right?
I'd like to consult with town attorney on it before we accept the application, because if you need to do a quiet title for that.
Because, he doesn't own it, clearly back to eighteen sixty-four, looking at the deeds, it's been accepted and reserved out of all the deeds.
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't know who it was accepted and reserved for.
You don't know what the location of it is on the face of the earth, either, other than just.
If you want, I can do a little presentation and show you what we did, because the last application, I guess, got to a point to where they had state approvals and DOT approval, and then it kind of stalled out at the town, if I understand correctly. And the owner Chuck Sargent, who's here with me tonight, I'm Scott Frank, with San Antonio Land Consultants, hired us, we resurveyed it, redid all the work out there. In addition, did more ground penetrating radar, which is shown on the plan, we did, there's been two locations, one that they did in the spring of this year, and then we did another one this fall, or late summer. It was a much larger area, and we couldn't, they, they found nothing that they could detect with that, which doesn't mean it's not there, it's that the radar, ground penetrating radar that we can use didn't detect anything. So what we're showing on the plan is the location that the tax map has, because we have nothing to dispute that that's the location.
Shows two graves, shows another, you know, it shows another possible cemetery out there, there was a gravestone.
There is a.
Located, but.
There is a gravestone, but it's clearly been moved. It's, it's, it's grown into the base of a tree down, and it's the base and a headstone over, fell over, but, and we did ground penetrating radar there too, as shown in the plans.
Yep. I'm hesitant to accept the application until we have that figured out. And I think we need to consult town council about what needs to happen.
Well, clearly.
I understand, I, I know, I know there's a problem, it's not, it wasn't created by you guys, I understand that, but I think that the, you may need to do a quiet title action or something somehow to, to.
I think accepting the application, at least getting the process started.
Yeah, but I don't want to do that and then start the clock ticking.
And then what?
Then start our time clock ticking.
Yeah.
The rules have changed on that in the last couple of months, so it's, it's, it's a little more onerous to.
Right.
Get it to continue when I, I mean.
But if the board's not happy with it and the applicant doesn't allow it to be continued, then that's kind of not smart on the applicant's part.
If.
If we could.
Look, if, if, I'll tell you what, I'll continue, I'll continue this until November tenth, and we'll, we'll consult with town council in the meantime.
I don't think that that's fair, because I think that there has been other, there was another piece of property out back which clearly was, was, put a multifamily out there, clearly did a plan for the planning board, which was submitted and they recorded the deed and recorded a plan, and it shows the exact same cemetery as what the town shows on the tax map, and I think that the whole Holy Ghost thing of, oh my God, where is it? You already know where it is, because.
Well, we don't know where it is, and it, the survey, I can't define it with meets and bounds, he can't locate it on the face of the earth, other than showing the lines on the plan there. That, that, to a layman, they may think that indicates where it is, but it really, it's not what we require as where things are in our subdivision regulations.
So where does that go?
If, that's why I want to consult with town council, and we'll do it quick, I mean, we'll do it, now that, now that you've come before us, we've got cause to talk to her and get this, to get a direction on how to handle this.
I don't understand what the quiet title would do, because you're still gonna say that there's, there's a burial ground there, where is it?
Yeah, but if you, if it, that's a different story after, I mean, once you, once you do the quiet title where you take away the other ownership on, so then you effectively own it all, now you haven't got a lot line there. Cause right now, you've really got some sort of a lot line there that you can't define.
True story? Well, it is, on the tax map, it shows it as a twenty by twenty area owned by the town of Ware.
Which is a lot line between you and the town of Ware.
There's no evidence, nobody ever monumented it or anything, so there's, it's floating, I guess.
So it could be a twenty by twenty anywhere on that, so even, even if you go.
That's the problem, it could be anywhere on there, you could, and it could be someplace you decide to build a house.
But if, so, so, but ultimately, if you go and you, and you do go for the quiet title, what difference does it make, because everybody still knows it's there, and it's still the same, same routine?
No, if it, if, we'll require some affidavit from whoever did the ground penetrating radar, this, this.
That we submitted the reports for that.
Okay. But we really need to define, either, we either need to define where it is or make it go away.
Yeah, a lot of times in these old cemeteries, you can't.
Can't make it away.
Things, you can't find evidence, and what's of record right now is the tax map showing the location. Other than that, we can't.
I'd be, I'd feel a lot better if the town attorney said to me, you know, if this language is on there, I'd be happy, I'd be okay with it, right now, I don't know that. And, and because it, part of the subdivision application is to show all lot lines and meets and bounds, all that, you haven't met all the terms of the application right now. So, I'm, I'm kind of doing you a favor by saying, let's continue this, because I haven't accepted the application yet, we haven't accepted the application yet. I mean, I could say, get everything per the application and come back, I don't, I'm not gonna do that, I'll, everybody's here, it's a public hearing, I can, we can continue it, and you don't have to start the application process over again.
It sounds like the, in my opinion, probably the best solution right now is to, if that's, if, if it's either denying the application, making it start over until this is figured out, or going to the attorney. Obviously, going to the attorney is.
That's essentially where we're at.
And I could do a little, I could bring you up to speed on what we've done and everything, and just continue it if you want, or if you don't even want to do that.
Yeah, I'd hate to hear, I mean, I think you gave us enough testimony right now that we figured out what's going on, that we really need to consult with the town attorney to see what, what we, as a minimum, what needs to be done.
Is it just because of what had transpired before?
Has nothing to do with what transpired before whatsoever. And anything that happened prior with that multifamily down there, I mean, this, I don't think there's anybody here that was on the planning board when that happened.
No, I know I wasn't, so.
Well, it's, it's all recorded.
Yeah.
In the registry of deeds, so, I mean, it shows location and everything.
I, I, I empathize with you, I mean, I've run into this problem myself with subdivisions, it's, it's, I, I get it, but I, I don't want to create a problem down the road. I'm trying to solve the problem now, so that doesn't come up again later for anybody, a hundred years from now.
So what would, would it be that you would be looking from the attorney though to resolve this?
I'm, I'm gonna be looking, I'm gonna be asking how can we, is there any language we can put on the plan in a situation like this, where nobody knows where it is? It is, I mean, you've got evidence that there's nothing there. And see what's acceptable from her eyes, that we can accept on the plan, I mean, I, it may be this, I don't know. But my gut says this isn't it. If it's twenty by twenty, I mean, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, we're, we're showing it per the tax map with the buffer around it.
Was there any, I mean, was, there's nothing in the.
There's no.
An exception, it just says a piece of, piece of land, doesn't say a size or anything.
Right away or anything else to it.
It just says access, is as, as a, um, accepting and reserving out of the deeds, back, way back to, and then allowing to pass and refast over the property to the cemetery.
Which, there's an existing trail that goes towards it, according to this, so, whether or not that's what it's for, so.
Yeah.
Which in the end, even if, the, the three, all three lots would end up having the same verbiage in it.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's consult, give us a chance to talk with our attorney, and she's, um, no, she doesn't land use, so she's pretty get, she's, she's pretty quick at getting back to us.
Who is it?
Laura.
Spectator Morgan.
Spectator Morgan, yeah, she's out of Laconia.
Yeah, they do a lot of towns.
Yep, they're, it's, uh, their law firm, yeah, their law, their law firm does a lot.
Right, yeah.
You just, that's what they do as municipal law.
Yep.
Someone wanna make a motion?
Make a motion to continue it for two weeks.
Consult with town attorney.
Consult with town attorney to get the language cleared for.
Second.
So, sorry.
Second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinctions?
So does that mean that we're, we're back on the tenth?
Yes.
Yes. Will that be your answer?
Yeah, you don't need to notify anybody or anything again, we're, we continued it, so...
Okay.
It'll be a busy night on the town.
I guess, thanks.
Yeah, we're not trying to...
I, 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 I get that it's all about the protection of, of, it's really the town, because if it, it shows on the tax map as the town's, I mean, it's kind of a...
And if there is somebody buried there, someplace, we don't want relatives coming back and saying we desecrated their burial site either, if somebody else...
Chances of that happening are slim to none, but, but...
So let, let's check with Laura.
Let's just check with Laura.
All right.
Okay, thanks. The, um, the agenda's done, but we've still got some people here.
I was about that three fifty-one, I don't...
Oh, okay. I didn't know if you...
I was just curious about the cemetery, you know, 'cause I, I live across the street, and my house was built in seventeen seventy-six, I believe those people built my house, were descendants of those people. I just wanna make sure the cemetery thing is...
Yeah, we'll try to do the right thing here.
Yeah, no, that's, that's all I'm concerned with, yeah. No, I don't care less about it.
Bruce, can I see that plane?
The business, so... I'm just curious about that.
That's the, that's the dirt road, the driveway that goes next to that house, it looks like there's a gravel operation up there, isn't it?
There is.
Yeah.
Once we get the plan accepted, no one will miss that.
That's, that's what I saw, that's what I was trying to picture where it was when you told me, so I figured that was it.
So I just got a question.
Okay.
Hope I just remember one. Had a guy call me about a piece of property he has on a private road. What do you guys do about private roads now?
Well, you can't do subdivisions on them.
Okay, is that what it comes down to? Okay.
At this point...
Yeah, he's the last lot on the end of, I don't even know where it is, Emerson Turnpike?
Emerson Turnpike?
Yeah. I think it's Emerson Turnpike.
Sounds like it's on Candy or something, right?
Yeah, I was gonna say, whatever.
I was gonna say Candy or... Not in game, someplace like that.
Who knows what I'm doing?
You've been too many places, Jeff.
That's... It's a large tract at the end, wherever that really is. But, who wants to break off a lot or something, so I don't know.
Is that the town corner?
Yeah, it is up, I believe it is up on the town line.
New Boston Francis Town, or?
Yep. Okay.
Again, I haven't been out there.
It is Emerson Turnpike.
I guess there's a couple houses on it already.
The Gettings Road out there has a couple houses on it, it's in the same neighborhood.
It's in the same, I was gonna say the same ballpark.
Is he allowed to pull a building permit on a private road?
He can get a building permit for one lot, he has to, still needs to get, go to the ZBA.
Yeah. To get a variance on that.
Yeah.
And he needs to get permission from the selectmen to use the road.
Okay. All right, but there, there is a route.
Well, it's a, it's a private road, not a class six road, right?
Right, right.
They're treated the same.
Yeah, treated the same, and then the fire department has input in it, so...
I mean, to do one house out there is, is no stretch.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a butter has a house there, one a butter away there, right, there's a couple of them right there, I see pink dots on this plan, so...
Oh, okay, I didn't know if it's on my school, don't it?
No, no.
If it's mine, it's usually a copyright.
Yeah.
All right, so that's basically why I think the question I had, is I didn't wanna dive into this and get hung up on not being allowed to do anything on it, so... All right?
Okay.
Thank you, we'll see you guys in a minute.
Yep. That's, um, it says minutes here, but we don't have any, so...
We have Danny's minutes. From the sidewalk.
Didn't we do those right here?
Hey, you may have done them the thirteenth, I don't know, I wasn't here.
Yeah, we did those.
I was, okay.
Yeah, we did those last meeting. Those are the only minutes we did last meeting.
Okay, that's the only ones we have, right?
So I guess motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Don't hit that yet, I gotta stop it over there first.
Forest, right? It'll be running all night.